I guess we can call the meeting, the ZBAA meeting, to order at 7:06. We'll do a roll call. Linda Donovan is not yet present. Patch Wards.
Is here.
Phyllis Hube, present. Joe Dusso.
Here.
Ed Burke, present. And there's our attorney, Joe Moriello. Ah, Justin Ty, present.
I just have to get, catch my backpack.
No problem, take your time. The minutes were flat that Linda had showed up. All right, on our agenda, review and approval of the minutes. Actually, the minutes were pretty short. Has anyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Is everybody reviewed the minutes?
Yes.
I have a motion to review the seven minutes.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. All right. First is the public hearing for, by Trans Hudson Management regarding CVS. Do you want to keep it open again?
Yes, so to.
June 9th, and Joe, there's no problem, just continue, will you keep it open?
No problem, at the applicant's request, we may, obviously, let's hear from them if they plan on coming in in June. If they do, we probably should renotice it in the paper. And I think a fair amount of time has gone by since the last appearance.
Right.
So you can keep it open, but we may have to renotice it.
With, they were front of the planning board, correct?
They, to my understanding, they have been before the planning board, right?
Yes.
Kelly? And in front of the planning board, they revise their plans and...
To not need the variance.
As it stands right now, they don't need a variance for how their plans...
But I guess the planning board should look at the site plan differently at some point and say, well, we're going to get this or...
Does keeping this open only apply to the two variances that they were requesting?
If it turns out, maybe, I think, at the planning board level, that those variances need to be revised or modified, or there's one less, or they need an additional one, or whatever, they may have to amend the application.
Okay, so they have the ability to amend the application, but the public hearing that's open is not specific to those two variances?
That's why I think that depending on what they do and what comes out of the planning board, this board may need to renotice the public hearing. Even if they were identical, I think you probably should renotice it just to be on the safe side. Because there's been a fair amount of time that's gone by, it's almost six months, Kelly?
Yes.
Yeah, so, but, but it could bring something else, and I would suspect if it does, they will want to amend this application.
Okay. Entertain a motion to continue to keep the public hearing open for Trans Hudson Management?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? All right, Linda, you want to take over?
I think you're doing fine.
She'll ask me, you know.
Okay, moving on to the Schaller Super 8 request for a variance for the sign.
Shall we approach?
Please do. The public hearing has already been opened, we have a continuation of the public hearing. So if you folks would summarize what it is you're requesting, it's been a while, of course, and where you have, where you are right now.
Okay, I believe it was September, we had approached the board. We came in asking for a variance in both sides and in height from the roadway of Route 299. The, we were granted the variance as far as area and size goes. Permitting that we paint the pole, we need to still paint the pole pan, it requires sanding, priming, and the painting. They also have to install a new bulb, because when they put up new sign, of course, one bulb was blown out, so they need to fix that as well. As far as the height goes, we still have not acquired a variance, and hopefully we would. The law states that it needs to be 12 feet above the roadway. We're seeking a variance of four feet. Throughout the process, in all the months, we've researched different locations of the sign and whatnot. Now we currently have a sign that adheres to the law of the 12 feet that's been installed. So at this point, what we're simply asking for is a four-foot variance. When compared to our previous signage, which was the Super 8 sign, it's been there for a little over 30 years, that was 21 feet from the roadway. If, well, currently the sign is 12 feet, if we were to get the variance of four feet, then we would be five feet less than what the Super 8 sign was. We also reduced the size of the signage compared to what the Super 8 sign, the Super 8 sign was a total of 108 square feet, and now our signage is 80 square feet. So today, we're just seeking a little bit of closure to know whether or not we can increase the height of the sign, if it's possible. There are obstructions, I guess they should tell you about those. We have obstructions on our property, we have evergreen trees that serve a purpose for our clientele. It creates a little buffer of privacy, it also creates, so that way you hide our big home building. Those have been trimmed below, so that way they can continue to grow, and they have been trimmed above now as well. We can certainly trim them a little bit more, but you're squashing the trees, so eventually, we're going to have to pull the trees out. Do we have to do it today or tomorrow? No, but probably in a couple of years, we'd have to go and pull them out, and then it would take time for them to grow back again. We prefer not to do that, because they create a nice buffer at the level that they sit. The other obstruction is the New York State Thruway Overpass fence. The fence, I don't know exactly how high it sits, but right now, as you are coming from the New York State Thruway and you're looking over at our signage, it's behind the fence. Now, yes, you can see through a fence with some holes in it, but it's still an obstruction, so it kind of defeats the purpose of having the sign there. The last obstruction is on, I believe it's the New York State Thruway that owns the property, but I'm not 100% sure. If you're coming from the New York State Thruway and located on the left-hand side, they have almost five or six trees that are growing right along the roadway, which are growing, and now they are in full bloom with foliage, which also blocks the sign. The other argument to that is that you're ways away, so maybe you don't need to see that. Our argument for that is, we're serving clientele that's from out of state, or New York City, or upstate, wherever. They're not necessarily familiar with New Falls, so it's exciting for them to be able to find a sign as soon as they come off the New York State Thruway interchange. So that's really where we sit, and that's, at this point, we're just looking for the closure to find out what we can...
Let me just clarify this, the sign that is up there now is in conformity with the request that you made?
Yes.
So if we were to approve your request for a variance, that's what it's going to look like, that's what it's going to be?
It'll be a little bit higher.
It will be a little bit higher.
Yes, it'll be four feet higher. Right now, it complies with the law for 12 feet from the roadway. To the top of the sign.
Yeah, yeah. You point out, and it's a valid point, that that fence, the highway fence, is an obstruction, but I also noticed, when you're coming from the east, you have a very clear picture, any motorist has a very clear picture, of the sign that is on the building that also says, you know, the same thing, so, yeah.
Sure.
So there is that.
My only concern, I'm not arguing this, we've been fortunate throughout the winter to see no foliage, and on the New York State Thruway side of the property, where the actual toll booths are and stuff, there's a ton of trees that are along the roadside that now have foliage, which obstructs both the wall sign and the pole sign. Now, again, you know, it's a distance away, and I know that not all businesses necessarily, you need, I don't know, 100, 150 feet of exposure, it's just, it'd be nice for our clientele to be able to spot us right away, to be honest.
I was, I was very pleased to see the sign, because I thought it was a perfect height. When I came down, after being away for three or four months, I could see it clearly. I don't, I don't believe that the overpass rail does interfere with your sign. I don't see that as a problem, am I missing something?
I will respectfully disagree with you, because I, you know, because I had asked you, what would the sign look like at that height? And you really weren't able to provide that to us.
No.
And every time I drive by, I look at the sign, and it's basically the same height, I think, as the wall sign, but there is that bar going right through it almost the whole time, and I really try to look at it coming from the west.
No, I'm not talking about the sign that's against the building.
I understand that.
I'm talking about the poles.
I understand that, but they're basically the same size, so when you're driving up, I think to Linda's point, you can see the sign on the, on the wall clearly, without any obstruction, but there is that bar that goes right through it. And again, most importantly, I think, is also coming from the west, with the trees in bloom, you can't see it.
No, obviously.
Well, you know, it's, I, you know, I've had some time to digest this, and I keep going back to, if you hadn't decided to change, we'd still be looking at a 21-foot monstrosity.
Right. Is four feet going to make the difference for you, you think, in terms of the trees?
I believe so, because the sign where it is now, the sign itself is five feet tall, okay? So if I were to imagine it sitting on top of itself almost, that gives me tree clearance, it gives me fence clearance and everything. I feel like it's fine at that level. And it'll certainly give me a number of years before the trees start growing, and I have to be concerned with that as well.
And to your point, the tree that's the thruway's property, that, was it a maple?
It looks like maples, it looks like a row of maples.
Looks like a maple, because that, now that that's starting to bloom, you can't see it, you could see it three weeks ago, clearly, but now...
For me, I sympathize with, with your plight.
Well, don't forget, almost everybody now works on GPS.
I try, I try to understand that as well, and as, as somebody who's been driving around looking at colleges, I know where the GPS, I know where the GPS is, but actually being able to spot the sign helps as well. Because sometimes, I don't know about you, but I've driven by my turn, a whole bunch of times.
To Williger doesn't help as much either with the traffic on the corner, so, they, they can certainly follow it, but they usually pass it, and then they always have to turn right along. Unfortunately, the Hampton will have an access over there, so if they need to, then they can pull into their parking lot.
Oh, they pass to Williger?
Yeah, 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 they pass it all the time.
Yes.
It's so close to the corner, unfortunately, it's cruddy how they built it, but...
Well, there's going to be some improvement, hopefully, with the marking on the street, once the end is done.
Yeah.
Let's hope, yeah.
So, so to, to add to what kind of what Ed, what Ed was saying, the last few times I've come off the thruway, knowing that I was going to be here tonight, I paid extra attention to it. And yes, you see the sign, but it's barely above everything, and I can see how that situation can deteriorate fairly quickly as growth continues, it's not like it's, there's plenty of space between the trees, and it's barely above that. So yes, you can, you can see it, but I can see how it can be a concern moving forward from that perspective. So I do have a certain level of sympathy with, with the potential for that being an issue at this point.
I sort of agree, who's old travel, I've done in the years I've been on Iowa, it's all, there's a place to stay. Just sometimes you just can't do it anymore, and you see a sign, it does help, you know, so I kind of agree with that.
This is rather irrelevant, but it's something that comes to my mind all the time, and that is that To Williger Lane now with Novellas, with the Hampton Inn, and with the country's best, whatever it is here. Anyhow, it's becoming a real hospitality designation for New Falls. People come, will take him right off the thruway, they can decide him in America's Best Value, and then...
About metal, that is.
Absolutely, a little farther away, but, yeah. And, and I think the fact that Novellas will be having weddings and things is going to help your business too.
Absolutely.
I would...
They have in part already, I mean, they've held events already, even when they hold local events, like they did the Fireman's Dinner the other night, where someone don't want to drive, so then they just come on over, and I offer discounts, so that way it gives them the incentive, because some people, you know, they don't want to pay a regular rate for that, and if they're locals and whatnot.
Very generous, I mean, we appreciate it. Well, I was impressed with the sign itself, I thought the sign was such an improvement over what had been there, so, you know, I do...
I like to do cover a lot.
Yeah, yeah, I do appreciate that. Now, any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Liam, do you have an opinion?
Well, Johnny must have.
Personally, I think increasing or making the sign more visible would increase, like, traffic and flow towards the town. I mean, for towards town, that always helps, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
The big thing is that the mountains are picking climbing, and that would only help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments to the public? Then I'll entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
And in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed, now we'll turn our attention to the, if I can find it, the five criteria that we have to consider for area variances. And you have that in front of you, Mr. Chan?
Yeah.
I typed something out.
Okay, the applicant should be prepared to address the following considerations at the time of the meeting. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
There will not be an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood, nor will there they produce a detriment to any nearby properties by granting the variance. In fact, the change may be viewed as more desirable, because we've already reduced the area size and the height of the current sign to be five feet shorter than the Super 8 sign that existed for over 30 years. The pole is also going to be sanded, primed, and painted to look brand-new and match the building.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
Due to the variety of hardships and obstructions, this is not possible, such as the property sitting low to Route 299, the future growth of the trees on the New York State Thruway property, the fence that was built on the thruway overpass, the trees that surround the sign to provide guest-staying privacy, noise reduction, and a better curb appeal, and lastly, the level of traffic during arrival hours, guests of 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. blocking the sign.
Whether the requested area variance is substantial?
Our request is substantially less than when compared to the Super 8 sign that has been in place for 30 years. It's now 26% less in size, or 28 square feet less, when factoring in both sides, and it's approximately 25% shorter, five feet shorter, less in height from the Route 299 level from when we had the Super 8 sign. Our request is substantial when compared to the current sign law for a pole sign, because the law states that you may have a max height of 12 feet, five feet shorter than the, I'm sorry, five feet shorter than the Super 8 sign, but 33% increased from the law of four feet.
Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect, or impact, on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Again, we've had the sign there for 30 years, and it was larger and taller than what we proposed. If we hadn't changed our brand, we wouldn't even be before the ZBAA board. And lastly, the pole's going to be painted, so it's going to match the building, so it'll hide itself a little bit more.
And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? Which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of an area variance?
The hardships we were encountering are not self-created, but the fact that we changed our brand and need to change the sign is self-created.
Yes, yes, but some of the difficulties, of course, are created by, by the Highway Department, by the thruway.
Yes, exactly.
I really do appreciate your preparing such thorough answers, usually I just get yes or no as long as, so that really is very helpful.
Try to be prepared.
At this point, no other comments, no other questions?
The only comment that I'm going to make is probably the sign will remain there for another 30 years. So, you know, it is important, the issue, before any of the boards that you come before, because it is so, such a long-term thing, you know, it's not quite for months or whatever.
Then I'll entertain, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion that we either grant or deny the area variance for the country's best value, America's Best Val...
America's Best Value.
Sorry about that, I haven't mastered it yet, I still want to say Super 8.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we approve the variance as submitted for the America's Best Value. I think you did an excellent job preparing us, I appreciate the fact that you left it open so we could actually see what it looks like.
I appreciate that, so...
And is there a second to that?
I happily second it, thank you.
And then those in favor, who's that, Joe?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And I also wrote in favor, however, thank you very much.
Thank you guys, I very appreciate it.
Yeah, you're very nice.
Pleasure meeting you.
I still do it too, it's got a record.
Thank you, thank you, congratulations.
CVS, I guess I mentioned CVS?
Yes, CVS, we postponed.
So this is an interesting coming up.
The next item...
No, I think I was on hiatus, I know.
So I don't, you know, I haven't, but I'll just get the podcast. The next item is the initial application for the Jewett Family Farm area variance.
Good evening.
And we have had some information about this many, many months ago, but please remember that we have new members on the board.
Absolutely, yes.
So start from...
Many months ago or many years ago?
Many years ago. Good evening, my name is Patty Brooks, I'm a land surveyor, land planner, and I'm representing Jewett Family Farm in the two-lot subdivision of their property on Hubenot Street. Although on the surface, it may appear to be a simple two-lot subdivision, because of the condition of the property and the location of the property, we actually are requiring approval from the Town of New Falls Planning Board, the Village of New Falls Planning Board, and the Town of New Falls Zoning Board of Appeals. This application received final subdivision approval back in 2008 for the same application. However, at that point in time, the purchaser of proposed lot number two backed out of the deal, and therefore, the subdivision was not finalized. A condition of the Zoning Board of Appeals' application at that point in time was that it was conditional on final approval of the subdivision plot of the Town of New Falls. And since those final conditions were not met, the variance as well expired. So the reason that we are before this board this evening is, on the map, along the rear of lot number one, we show a dark blue line, which is the boundary line between the Village of New Falls and the Town of New Falls. Now, I only think I have four copies of this, so I probably didn't get a chance to share a bit, but according to the New Falls Code, section 140-4 in definitions, lot frontage is the lot line that is coincident with and measured along the right-of-way of any dedicated highway. So in this case, our highway is Hubenot Street.
And Hubenot Street is here.
Correct. And lot width is the minimum horizontal distance between the side lot lines measured at the line established by the front yard. So in this particular zone, in the Town of New Falls, we're in the 81.5, we require 150 feet of width and 150 feet of road frontage.
What do you have, 108?
We have 100 feet of road frontage in the Village of New Falls, because the Village of New Falls only requires 100 feet of lot width. However, in the Town of New Falls, and this where it gets a little bit silly, you have zero road frontage and zero lot width, because it doesn't have any frontage at all in the Town of New Falls. There is no provision in the code that says, if you derive your access from another town, you can meet whatever that criteria is, some towns have that, most not. So because of that technicality, we are required to get a variance from the Town of New Falls to seek both a lot width and a lot frontage variance, because we have neither in the Town of New Falls.
Is that because this is all in the village?
Correct.
Okay, so...
So it's impossible for a parcel that has no road frontage in the Town of New Falls to achieve those two requirements.
If you get the approval from the village, why do you need it from the town?
Well, we, we are both before the Village Planning Board and the Town Planning Board, and neither of them have any issue with the subdivision itself, but it's a technicality that because this is in the Town of New Falls code, and, and we don't have that lot frontage, that we seek the area variance.
I'm sorry, lot one is in the town.
Lot one is totally in the village, and totally needs...
Lot one is totally in the village.
So right now, this is one big property.
One big property of 104.98 acres.
What you're going to do is take this 10.47, cut it out.
Correct.
This will be entirely in the village.
Correct.
And then this 94 acres, your access road's going to be right here going through.
Correct.
And because you don't have 150 feet...
Because I have zero feet.
Right, because you're zero, because you don't have 150 feet, you're looking for a variance to, for everything, because this is still in the village.
Correct.
All right, how wide is this going to be?
100.
That's 100.
So you're only looking for 100 feet.
That's what the village needs.
That's what the village requires, we are feeding the village.
The village requires 100 feet, I got you.
Okay, so they only need 100, 100 feet of variance in the town.
And, and I just want to correct something, because I did misspeak. This little triangular-shaped piece of lot number one is in the town.
This, it says proposed?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because this is the proposed new lot line. So this little area in here, because the coop is there, because of topographically, farm lanes or so forth.
She didn't own, they don't have any frontage in the town, right?
Correct. The town has jurisdiction for any subdivision that's going on in the town.
Patty, what are the plans to do with these lots if they are subdivided?
Lot number one is still on the market, there is the original farmhouse and farm buildings on that property from the original Jewett Farm.
That's the farm that you see when you're on the watch?
Correct, yes. Lot number two, there's young couples, their, their farm is Row by Row. They are currently organic farmers in Duchess County, they are in contract to purchase the property. For those of, I won't say for those of you who heard before. This, yeah, this property is encumbered by an easement with the Waukesha Valley Land Trust. You will see that, I believe, it is number 11, makes reference to the conservation easement and the fact that lot number two can be used for agricultural purposes only.
So this could never be built?
Correct, they're going to put a barn and, and farm the land.
But they would not reside on it, they wouldn't put, they couldn't put a house up on it?
Correct.
And they are not interested in purchasing that number one?
No, the lot number one, the dwelling, it's, they would be biting off more than they can chew. Right now, they're renting and concentrating all their efforts in the farm. So that is how they would like to stay and build their business.
Can that be besides just, can it also be beef and, or livestock?
Their proposal is for crop farming and chickens. They are allowed to have, as a right on the crop farming, I believe that depending on the number of chickens that they have, they might need site plan approval from the planning board. But that's their goal.
Did you say they were organic farms?
Yes.
Terrific. That'd be wonderful.
So to the north, you have the Huguenot Street Farm Partners?
Correct. Which is the CSA, of course, to the south.
To the south, you have Nyquist Foundation?
Yeah, it's, it's the park.
Okay, so that's a park. This is already a farm?
Farm, yes.
So in between, you're gonna have, okay, park and farm, and what about Hasbrook?
Is a single-family residential.
Single-family residential.
As is, as is this lot right here. All of these along the roadway. Lot number one is Bernie Riddell, two is Jeremy, Jeremy Maig, I'm not sure. There are residential properties along the frontage of Huguenot Street.
And this is currently being used as a farm?
Yes.
Okay, so no change in use?
Mr. Calucci is hating it right now.
Okay, so it's, it's currently a farm, it's gonna continue to be a farm?
Correct.
And couldn't be anything but?
Correct.
An agricultural endeavor.
If I may ask, for the, the board and to Joe, is there any precedent here? Is this the first time we've come across this?
In my, in my memory, yes.
The first time, yes.
It, you know, it's just one of those.
Yeah.
Properties and, and it happens a lot of times if the lines between the two municipalities are, you know, come down on the side of a property line. In this case, it was apparently the line between, behind Richard Hasbrook shown on the map. And the line came down, followed that, and then for whatever reason jogged back down.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you ended up with a piece in one village, in the village, and a parcel in the town. The piece in the village would be perfectly fine.
Yes.
If the piece in the town were moved down toward Huguenot Street, you'd have a thousand feet of road frontage? Patty?
Yes.
There would be all kinds of road frontage on Huguenot Street if, if the parcel wasn't shaped this way.
Yeah, the road frontage is located in the Village of New Falls, which has a requirement of 100 feet. Additionally, no structures are proposed to be constructed until the lot widens over 1,000 feet. So yes, it's a thousand feet once it hits the town.
Right, once that road goes back, but there's no residential, there's no residential use or further development planned anyway because of the restrictions on, imposed by the conservation easement. So it's really a hundred-foot strip to a farm that used to be accessed over a proposed farm lane that was probably 12 to 15 feet wide?
Right. We had originally proposed that the access strip be 50 feet because 100 feet was kind of excessive just as an access strip. But the, the village felt that, that was not a variance that they could support, so we needed to widen it to the 100 feet in width, which actually is consistent with the lots, the building lots across the street. So we're putting a driveway over a parcel of land that is the same width as building lots in the same neighborhood.
So the only way you wouldn't need a variance was if this was 150 feet wide and this parcel was next to the town?
No. Oh, it wasn't next to the town, yeah, the, yeah, the second part being the key, yeah. Regardless of how wide the road frontage is, we still need the variances from this board because we have zero.
Were you involved in this in 2008?
I was, yes.
Any of the neighbors, are all the neighbors still the same, do you know?
Some of these are new, like that's a brand-new deed, that's a brand-new deed. So there may be some new neighbors. Just to give you an idea of where we stand with the other boards, this board should have received a circulation notice.
The other board being Village or Planning?
Village and Town Planning Boards. We have appeared before both of those boards already because we needed a referral from the Town Planning Board to appear before your board. So in April, we appeared before the Town Planning Board. They declared themselves and intend to be lead agent, and we have done the circulation, so hopefully you've received your package in, to that regard. And then in May, we appeared before the Village Planning Board. Right now, we have a schedule laid out, which is a rather aggressive schedule of meetings. We, we've already appeared before the Town of New Falls Planning Board initially, the Village initially. We've delivered our notices of intent for seeker this evening. We're at the ZBA. On June 8th, our 30-day seeker notice will be completed, and that evening, the Village and Town Planning Boards are holding a joint meeting. We are hoping that at that meeting, they will schedule a joint public hearing. If we can anticipate a public hearing before this board on the next evening, which would be the night, we would then hold a public hearing for the joint Village and Town Planning Boards on the 22nd of June. So there's, you know, it's quite a process of approvals that we're trying to keep in a row here, according. So to date, there have been no public hearings, so I can't say, we haven't had any concerns raised. The concerns that were raised by the neighbors back in 2008 were addressed satisfactorily to their satisfaction, which is why final approval had been granted at that point in time. I know that Heidi Jewett has been meeting with the neighbors and alerting them to the fact that we were back before the boards for the process again and.
Patty, this is the same plan that was presented then?
Correct.
Exactly.
The only difference, at that point in time, there was a land swap occurring between the Huguenot Historical Society property and this property. That probably the board will be seeing again down the road, but that would be an application once the property is sold.
And the reason, again, that that was never, that, that, that variance.
That the subdivision never went through was because the buyer backed out.
The buyer?
Of lot number two.
Lot number two.
Yeah, there was a farmer that was gonna come in and, and purchase the land and, and run it agriculturally. I, I don't know why they did back out, but.
Wasn't there something a long time ago, before this was submitted, there was a little piece that was cut out back here for a house?
There, in the original, yeah, in, there was a property, this was Cosla at that point in time.
Yes, right.
And Cosla had a building envelope. Part of the original submission was that they were going to be swapping building envelopes or doing something, and they were gonna propose a single-family dwelling. That is not part of the application. This is solely for agriculture.
This is so simple. This is really simple. It involves the house, the barn, the Jewett property, and then the rest of it is all agriculture.
So can lot one be subdivided at all?
No.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, there's a restrict, the, the conservation easement restriction has a, a building envelope that only covers the existing improvements on the 10.47. And I guess that is one thing that, I believe that originally when the conservation easement was granted, there were a certain amount of structures that could be constructed, agricultural buildings, and they were originally going to be in the area of what we're calling lot one. So Walkville Valley Land Trust has agreed to relocate those agricultural structures on lot number two.
It's big, but it seems pretty simple.
And, and again, you know, the.
All the work's been done, isn't it?
Twice, twice.
Twice, yeah.
We're just dusting off the book and opening it up.
Yeah, basically, I think the, the major thing that changed was that the FEMA came in and re-designated the floodplain in 2009 and changed the elevations on all of their benchmarks. So we had to redo all of that work, but the line ended up actually being pretty much in the same location it was previously.
That doesn't involve us.
No, no.
So this was exactly where the entrance was gonna be back then?
Everything is exactly the same.
And this was different, though?
Nope, that was exactly the same as well.
All right, this is just in 2008.
Yes. You know, and the reason, again, not before this board at this point in time or any board, for the land swap, for those, because somebody had asked about it, is that the former channel and the, and this area here would go to the Nyquist Foundation for a part of the, and the parkland. And this field right here, which is currently being farmed, would go to here. So it wouldn't be a nice straight line anymore, but it would follow the contour of the property and the use of the property. So that may be coming back, but that's not before the board at this time.
So this is right on the river?
Yes.
How close to the river do they farm to? Is it 200 feet or?
No, the 200 feet is regulated area per the New Falls wetland regulations, but they are able to farm agriculturally right up to the end, and they pretty much do. This area in here is not farmed because it's a wetland area and it uses the vegetation, but. It is. I'm pretty excited to, and the couple that's purchasing it is, they're just wonderful.
Oh, that's so nice.
Yeah, very passionate couple.
And they, I, I, now with all of this, I forgot. Lot one, does it have a buyer yet or no? No, it does not, huh?
Keep your fingers crossed.
Some very nice people, too.
Yeah. Well, and you know, the, the nice thing is that it's a lot easier to sell a farm home that maybe needs some tender loving care on 10 acres than it is on 100 and whatever, 140 acres. A little more manageable on 10 acres, but still large enough that you have plenty of privacy and.
Reading the, reading the motion from 2008, it said that lot two would be approximately 81.3 acres?
That's because at that point, there was also the lot line revision.
Okay. But it's still 104.9.
Correct. The overall parcel is still 104.9. And the 10.47 was identical, but of course, since the variance was granted to lot two, I think they only brought the change.
Are there markers to indicate where, where this access piece is? And if we go out and take a look at this, the site, are we going to be able to?
Yes, the entrance of the farm lane?
Yeah.
Is in the same location that it will continue to be. And this is a stone wall line along Hasbrook. And there's a telephone pole right here, so you'll pass the telephone pole, you'll see the farm lane, which right now comes in on a diagonal, but it will be straightened out to be within the 100-foot strip.
That's not gonna be blacktopped or anything like that?
No, no. It's just.
So then Patty, on, on the one side, in the field, they should see a stone wall.
Yep.
On the other side, it's showing two fairly large trees?
Two large trees and also a telephone pole right along the roadway, so as the driving.
Pole down by the road, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That's about your.
Yep, between the telephone pole.
But then we don't go down the existing farm lane, we have to.
It would be parallel with the.
To the stone wall.
100 feet is huge.
Very, very wide.
It was just a little tree.
In fact, I think they probably, I think they're putting some kind of a, a restriction on part of the use, you know, they, obviously, the owners of, of lot number one or the, the current owner, Heidi, does not want any structures put in that 100, because again, it's in the village. So, you know, you could put a shed there, you could, whatever. So there are restrictions that nothing.
This room is 25 feet wide. It's gonna be four times the width of this room.
Right, yeah.
And, and in the town, you need 150 feet of frontage. Anybody here have 150 feet of frontage on their town lot?
Not me.
Heidi.
Currently?
Yes, I do.
One in five. That's a lot of frontage.
It is a lot.
And you will tell Heidi, of course, to expect us to come out and walk the property and that'll be all right.
We can take some time.
I thought this was the public hearing, no? No, no, it's only the. No, this is our first presentation.
So at this point, I mean, you can certainly still ask questions and we will have a chance, you know, we do have the, the public hearing for you to ask more questions after you've been out there. But I would entertain a motion that we set the public hearing for the Jewett Family Farm application for the, let's see, June 9th, June 9th meeting.
So what?
Second? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, Heidi, there you go.
And I will offer to anybody, if you would like me to meet you at the site and show you what's happening, my phone number hopefully is on the map.
Could you just email Kelly?
Oh, sure. With my contact info?
With your contact information, she can forward it.
Yeah, but no, I'll send it to, and then that way she can send out a mass email to.
And Patty, I, I will give you this bit of information too, just so that you know, that this is my personal last meeting meeting, and I will be resigning as of tomorrow, so there will be, hopefully, there'll be a replacement for me.
Well, I, congratulations, but what a loss to, but you put your time in, so I guess you, you deserve a bit of a rest, but.
Don't encourage her back.
Well, I'm glad that I got. Oh, you're actually relocating? Oh my gosh, well, I'm really glad that I got to be here for your last meeting, man.
Me too, me too.
She's moving to some 10-acre lot.
That makes three different variances.
So again, I'll send my contact information to Kelly and she can circulate it to everybody, and by all means, feel free to reach out to me. Happy to meet you anytime. Thank you very much. Pleasure to meet everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you again, and best wishes on all your endeavors, yeah.
And, see where we are. Okay. Any old business that anyone would like to raise? If that's the case, then I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Well, before we do that.
Before we do?
Before we do that, I would like to personally thank you for all your time and dedication to this board. It's very much appreciated. You were very, very good at helping people when they came, when they came on, and I appreciate all your time and effort, so thank you.
Thank you. And for those of you who are not aware of this, I think I mentioned it to the board, I have recommended to Susan Zinnett, who makes the appointment, that Ed take the chairmanship.
I'm on board, I'm on board with that suggestion.
So am I.
Less someone else get nominated.
Yes, I'll be putting my nominations in for others.
Linda, thank you very much. In my short tenure here.
I am sorry.
You have been wonderful, thank you.
I'm sorry, guys, that I didn't get to know you better, that we didn't work together longer, because it's, it's a joy to work with these people. Very conscientious, very. Okay, let's adjourn now.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second?
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.